Good evening. This is Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. According accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. The 80s boy band t-shirt you decided to wear tonight, or anything you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured and recorded forever and ever, and may possibly wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your friends and neighbors. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Janet Campbell.
Here.
Tom Sanford is here. Anticipated speakers on the agenda, we'll get to them when they're, when the time comes on the agenda. With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at 7:37 PM Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board to being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, with which includes links for the public to join in this meeting. Some ground rules. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I'll invite board members by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and/or emotions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Please remember to mute your telephone or your computer when you're not speaking. Please speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes is recorded. For any response, please wait until you are yielded the floor to state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. And now we can stop the show. So it's a light agenda, pretty much. One of the things that we were gonna do up until 7:45 is any bills are open mail. I got the mail, collected it. Most of it was notices from surrounding towns. There's nothing really other than, you know, zoning changes, some things like that, general housekeeping. We see it all the time, so there's nothing really earth shattering there. The only bill we already have, put a warrant in for it. We got another bill from Gatehouse Media for the exact same amount, just another month, you know, whatever the pay period is slid to. So there's nothing really there. There are a couple of articles that were posted by, or I guess not posted. They were put forward for the warrant from the Sennys that Margaret had copied but, and put to my, in our mailbox, but I hadn't retrieved them because they weren't, they weren't available at the time, but those are there. We don't have to do anything for them. Those are citizens petitions, right? Tim?
I'm unmuting. Give me a break. Give me a break, will you?
Okay.
All we have to do is hold the public hearing.
We do have to hold a public hearing, okay.
And so I just asked Margaret to send them to us, and she did. And so I'm sending them to all of us momentarily.
So is that our intent to, we can segue right into that because that's our next thing for, to talk about. The warrants that we have plus the, what are they, two or three that the Sennys put on?
I don't know. I'm about to open it.
Okay. We can do all of that at the same night, or do you want to have it in multiple hearings?
I'd do it the same night.
Okay.
I mean, the ones we're doing, unless Lynn Ryan causes a ruckus.
Eloise has her hand up.
Lynn, are you there? Unless Lynn causes a ruckus at the hearing, we'll be fine.
Eloise. Please. Thank you. Eloise?
She should be coming up.
Yep. She's unmute right now. Greetings.
She's muted again.
Yes.
She's gonna tell us that Sennys have five zoning articles, or five articles. Yeah, see, now that's a, five articles that'll modify the. Now, we have to check this though. See, that's the development agreement, so that's not us. That's the development agreement. That's not us. This is the zoning bylaw. That would be us. That's the zoning bylaw. So there's two that are zoning bylaw, two that are.
Development agreement?
Development agreement. Oh, and then there's one that's asking for a liquor license.
But that wouldn't be our hearing.
No, so the only, so we'd have to do two. And one would be for the the townhouses. One would be for the townhouses. And one would be for the drive-throughs. So we'd have the drive-through article and a townhouse article that we'd have to put on the, on our hearing.
Okay. And we, you think that we can accomplish those plus the stuff that we do all in one night?
Yeah, because the five we have are pretty simple. Yeah. I mean, we got time. We can think about it too. If it seems like we should split it, we can, because we wouldn't have to do them till
end of April.
First, first part of April.
Yeah. So is there anything? Have we had a public, we haven't had a public hearing on a Zoom platform, have we?
No.
Is there anything special that we need to consider?
We, we did?
Yeah, I think we did.
What did we do?
And have you helped with ZBA hearing?
Yes.
So do they have to do anything special?
No, the only thing special you have to do is just make sure that it's in the agenda and that the Zoom link is there so that the same thing you're doing now. It's, it's really not any different.
So the hearing notice would include the information about the Zoom link?
Yes.
That goes in the paper? Okay.
Yes.
That's not bad.
Providing we have some participation from the general public, so we kind of get a sense of what people are thinking.
Well, Lynn will be there.
Boy, you're, you're really beating that one, aren't you?
Well, you know, she, she called me last night and gave me hell, so that's only fair. She hasn't raised her hand yet, has she?
No.
What's the matter with her? She'll show up.
So, so.
Got her hand up now. Would you like me to promote her?
Yes, please.
Here she comes. You're muted, Lynn. I've asked them both to unmute. Lynn, are you able to unmute yourself? Can you raise your hand, or? I'm not able to unmute them. I'm only able to ask them to unmute. Well, Eloise is now unmuted. Eloise, can you say hello so we can see if we can hear you?
Hello.
Okay, there's Eloise.
Now I, I will go back to mute.
Well, we seem to have a problem with the attendees unmuting, so.
Nope.
Nope, she muted again.
Yeah.
She could call on the phone?
But there's Lynn.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Good evening. How are you?
I just want you to know, Tim, I won't pass to you now. I'll wait until town meeting.
Oh, God.
So do you want, do you want to hear me now, or do you want to hear me then?
No, no, now, now.
Well, I suggest that you be careful what you're saying, okay? You just might trigger something in my heart.
I know, I know. I'm sorry.
Lynn, did you have any?
I just want to take a chance to thank you. There are a couple of things that I see you're going to have at the town meeting. And they are problematic to us. You know, like this gross weight of vehicles. I know it, it doesn't sound like much, but you get the folks in there and they say, well, oh yeah, I have a big dump truck, but there's never anything in it when I bring it home. Okay, so there was no real definition of what the weight was. And if they turn around and said, well, it's always empty, or I don't bring the trailer home with it. So, you know, we can't, and then, you know, they went around and said, well, it should be as manufactured because they can just give any figure they want to the, I remember, we have to use something. But it's better than having the folks do their own thing. So, but anyway, I know this is a limited time and you have addressed a couple of the concerns we have, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Sure.
We'll have a couple more, won't we, Tim?
Yes. Definitely.
So, so Lynn, what we have proposed, does that, does that satisfy, or is that good enough for you guys? Or do you want us to make tweaks or modification to what we're proposing?
Well, Tim had asked me about that, and I sent you, Tim, right?
Right, so.
What, what needed to be, one of the things was that you have to be, I want you to think about what you want for a home-based contracting business. People are literally moving to Berlin because they want to have a home-based contracting business. And the way you were going to word it was they have to be a resident. And Tim knows I'm famous for my examples to the extreme. I think it should also have to be either the owner or a blood relative of the owner. And I say that for this reason. I live in a house with six bedrooms. If I rent out a bedroom, can that person gain residency in Berlin and then turn around and apply for a home-based contracting business? I don't think that was your intent. I think the intent of the Planning Board was to be reasonable with electricians and plumbers, and maybe grown children still living at home, so that they could pursue some kind of a craft, if you will, you know, whether they're plumbers or carpenters or whatever. So that was the one thing I gave you the verbiage, Tim, that I would just add on to it, that yes, they need to be a resident, but they also either be, need to be the property owner or a relative of the property owner by blood or marriage. Let me just see what else I had that I sent to you, Tim. Better now than a town meeting, right, Tim?
You've got gross vehicle weight and asking if we wanted to put it in the definition.
Right, because many times I get asked what GW, what GVW is. It doesn't anywhere the S.A. gross vehicular weight. And it would also add a lot of verbiage in that table. And I showed you that middle entry of the table, 541.
Right.
There's just a typo, and I didn't know if you wanted to go to the trouble of doing that through town meeting, or if you wanted to just do it as an administrative correction when you do the next version.
We'll blame it on James and ask Eloise if we can change it the next time we print.
I mean, I think the intent is pretty clear, but it's just, it says, the middle one is 80,000 square feet or over 160,000 square feet. And I think it should be 80,000 square feet or less than 160,000 square feet. No biggie.
And I've sent these to everybody now too, so.
Oh, did you? Okay, then I don't need to.
No, but it's good that you're explaining them, because this will help us. And then you went on to talk about articles you'd like to see in the future.
Do you really want me to mention those now, or?
Well, I don't, I mean, there's no harm.
Yeah.
Okay, I, there are several things, but there is one that really bothers me, and that's non-conforming use. The way the article is written for non-conforming use right now, the zoning board of appeals can, for all intents and purposes, grant a use variance. And I give the extreme example. And that is you take something like Thompson's scrap metal or junkyard. According to this bylaw, it's a non-conforming use. And as long as it's not more detrimental, we could, five people could sit at a table and grant them an auto dealership or an auto body shop. I think logic would say, yes, we get grandfathered you because it's unfair for us to close you down because you were there before we enacted zoning. But I don't think it's your intent, but maybe it is. I mean, I'm just assuming, and you know what that means, that you would want it to revert back to the current zoning if they were to give something up. Not for us to be able to give us, give them something that's lesser.
But don't they have, isn't it issued by a special permit?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's a special permit.
Right, so if the special permit expires and they don't do anything for two years, they can't get that use back, right?
No, but let's say Thompson's wanted to convert to a car dealership. Two years haven't transpired. They just want to, instead of doing scrap metal, they want to do a car dealership.
Okay, and so, so you're arguing that it shouldn't be, you shouldn't be allowed to make it a less lesser use.
It just.
Okay, or you're, you're just saying?
It would just revert to the underlying.
Okay, so, so if they want to change from being a junkyard to like an auto body shop, that wouldn't be allowed. You're gonna just, everything from that point?
They can, they can have their junkyard if they decide to abandon their junkyard. It goes back to residential agricultural.
Okay.
There's, in chapter 48A, in order for the zoning board of appeals to be able to give what's called a use variance.
Yes.
It has to be explicit in the bylaw. The only place it's explicit is in the non-conforming section. There is no other instance that we can give a use variance legally. So particularly where it's non-conforming, I don't know if you want us to do that. I mean, again, it's up to you folks, but that's something that, the other thing is, if you're a non-conforming use, how much can you increase the non-conformity? You have a house that's pre-existing non-conforming, and it's on 7,500 square feet. And maybe it has 1,000 square feet of floor area. Can they increase to 2,000 square feet, 3,000 square feet, 4,000 square feet? I'm not even sure the way it's currently written, that it doesn't affect setbacks. For example, you know, you have certain front yard, certain side yard, certain rear yard. Well, what if they don't meet it now? Does that mean any addition they do doesn't have to meet it either? So I'm just asking if.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but I would think that if you're trying to make it a less conforming use, then that would be prohibited.
Well, just read through the bylaw. It says we can allow restoration, rebuild, expansion. We can allow anything, and I believe years ago, because God knows I've been on the ZBA longer than I've been on ASABET, which is probably too long anyway. But I think it used to say structurally or physically, you could increase it by a maximum of 50%.
Yeah, that's what I remember, way back.
That was way back, okay? And the idea was you're already non-conforming.
Right.
It didn't seem fair to someone else who might have a house that they can't add on to because they're conforming. So it, I know it's not going to be a topic for this time, and if, if you, you know, question at some other time in the future, when you're looking at it, I mean, I'd be glad to go through with you what I think the pitfalls can be. And I especially want to thank you for doing the common driveway. We kind of went through a purgatory and through a back door. And I think this bylaw will prevent that.
Yeah.
It's more work for you guys probably, but you know, it's still probably a good idea.
Well, it adds another step in the process that takes the pressure off of you guys, and it allows us to have a public hearing if we deem it necessary, so that makes a lot of sense. I think your ideas about the, the non-conforming uses are good. It, you know, what we'll do is, this gives us some time. We can explore with the building inspector what he's seen in the other towns that he serves. And then we can ask Central Mass what, you know, they've seen in terms of zoning for other towns with non-conforming uses, whether, you know, most towns really wouldn't provide that opportunity for someone to come up with a similar, less detrimental use and slide that right in, in place of a use that's being discontinued. Because I understand what you're saying, and.
Well, you might find it to the contrary, because a lot of other towns allow the ZBA to give use variances. That's how the gas station next to me came to be. Was they gave, I mean, they didn't know it was illegal at the time. But they gave them, you know, it was residential agricultural, and they just changed the zoning. And some towns allow the ZBA to do that. I don't think we should. And I don't think we should, I don't think you want the ZBA. I don't think you want five people, you know, deciding, making those kinds of decisions. But anyway, that's for the future.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's a good one, you know.
No, it is a good one, because we struggle with, we struggle with some, some people that have come with non-conforming lots that have tried to, you know, mash them up or do things that, you know, kind of make them almost there, but not quite there. And they want us to give them, you know, an A and R, and we're like, no, we can't. You know, that's, it doesn't conform. It never, you know, it didn't conform before. It doesn't conform now. And yeah, you made it a little better, but it's still not conforming. We can't give you a lot out of it, so I understand where you're at. They probably wind up at your place anyways afterwards.
Oh, you're fresh.
Okay, so is there any, for what we're proposing for this round, does it seem to, to, you know, help you guys and do what you need done, or do we need to tweak it?
She's got a couple tweaks, and I sent you that language, so we can look at that and.
You, you guys still have to vote on the articles that are submitted as part of a citizen petition, correct?
If it's zoning.
Zoning, yeah.
Right, this, well, you said there were a couple coming in from Senni for zoning.
Yeah.
So when you have, and your hearing settled is going to be when? March 17th or something?
We haven't set a hearing date yet.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
But I sent you that language, Lynn.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the only other thing we were going to talk about was when we thought that was a good time, but you figure first part of April or mid-April for, I think we had, we talked about that the last time. And we said that we had a vote on by the 23rd of March for 13th of April hearing. Does that work? I think those dates work.
The 13th is, is so if we go back, it's gotta be
two weeks.
The ninth. It's got to be in Friday, the second, and Friday, the 26th. So at our March meeting on the ninth, we should determine that, if that's when we want to do it. And then we can get it in the newspaper for the 22nd or 23rd, so it shows up on the Friday, the 26th, and then Friday, the second. Yep. So that works.
And that would be for the 13th, right? Hearing on the 13th?
Yeah, and that, and then if something went crazy.
We have another, yeah.
We'd have another meeting before town meeting.
Okay. So on the ninth, the March 9th meeting, we'll vote on the articles?
Well, we've, we've already asked them to be included in the warrant.
Right.
So on the ninth.
The board report already.
Yeah, so on the ninth, we just, we just have to decide, you know, permanently to have the hearing on the 13th. And then we could either vote on the articles on the 13th, or we could wait two weeks and vote on them on the 27th.
27th. That works.
And then we're fine for the town meeting on whatever it is. May.
6th.
Is it the third? First Monday? May 3rd, I guess.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, so we're in good shape. There's, there's, there are six articles from the planning board. Margaret got in touch with me and said, did we want to include two others? And one was that big, long.
The arc.
Arc. And I said, no, no, no. Because we had talked about that. But I said, if you've got space and you, you feel it's appropriate, yeah, so. I sent her one more and rega, oh, the, the inclusion of residential care facility for not more than six people.
In a limited business.
In a limited business zone and requiring special permit and site plan approval in the residential agricultural zone and the. And that, that just cleans that up too.
Okay.
I move that we accept the minutes from our meeting on February 9th. What's today? The 23rd?
Today is the 23rd.
So February 9th.
Was 29, yes. Read a second. Did I hear a second? I'll take that as a second because I was reading him. So I got a emotion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, oh, I gotta do it by voice vote. Jay Teach.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yes, hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Janet Campbell.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries in the affirmative that we accept the minutes from last meeting. Thank you. The only other thing that I have on the agenda, unless you, you have another motion, Mr. Wheeler?
No, sir.
No, sir. Okay, excellent. The only other item I had on the agenda was Mark wanted to come and, and talk about his two-lot subdivision on Highland. But he's not ready yet. The, he doesn't have his plans finalized. But it's going to basically be a two-lot cul-de-sac subdivision. And that's about all I know about it.
You know what?
I can't hear you.
He wants to know where it is, maybe.
I, I don't know.
Oh.
I don't know.
Oh, now can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, now I can hear you. Perfect.
These computers.
So I'm not, I'm not totally sure where it is, but he just, it's similar to what he did up on was it Peach Hill?
Peach Hill and Randall.
And Randall, yep. So similar, little, small, 500 foot. Two lot, that's about it. But apparently I, it's got to be up near, I would think the, near the top of the hill because he said it was all rock and they had a hard time trying to find, you know, perccable land for septics. But he found it, so. We were, we, he was hoping to have it for us by this meeting, but it'll probably be the next meeting. Do we have, does, he has to have that, does he have to have his plans into us at a certain time before our meeting?
Has he given us a preliminary subdivision plan or definitive?
I think it's a preliminary.
If it's preliminary, then we can be a little more casual.
Right.
If it's a definitive, then it gets pretty particular.
Correct, but I, he was under the impression that he had to have it a week before, week to 10 days, I think it was 10 days, before our meeting that we had to have the plans in. And I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I mean, he must have the subdivision control law and it'll define when it's, it lays it on there pretty specifically. I don't have that in front of me, but.
Yeah, I, I didn't have it in front of me when he asked me the question, so. And I couldn't recall.
Yeah.
And regardless, he doesn't have it ready. We going to, I kind of indicated to him that we were going to have it reviewed by our, okay. Consultant.
Yeah, because I mean, you get into drainage. If there's ledge, you know, it's, yeah, we want to be sure we're doing everything right.
Got it, okay. Yeah. But that's, that's.
The citizens' planning, training collaborative or whatever, did I send that to you guys? There's a there's a workshop being held on writing defensible decisions. I'll send that around. And I'll send around, Central Mass has got a quarterly meeting coming up early in March. That's I think that's probably going to focus on equity and planning. You know, trying to be more equitable in the way in which planning is done for all the different constituencies. I think that's the topic, I think, for the meeting. So I'll send that around to people too.
So more is from economic as well as
Because, you know, I mean, it, it's a broader scope than just the zoning issues that planning boards deal with probably, you know, and so.
Right.
But it's, it's sitting back and asking some hard questions about, you know, are you unconsciously biased in ways in which your zoning, you know, functions and stuff like that, so.
Probably no doubt we are.
Yeah. I mean, that's institutional bias that, you know, we, we've, we've lived with it and assume it's the way it is and don't even understand the way it has impact on.
Think about when they were written. I mean, how many, how long has that been around?
Yeah.
30 years, 30, 40 years?
Yeah, I mean, the initial zoning was in the 50s, so.
The 50s, right. So I'll guarantee you it's got some institutional bias in it. So how do we remedy that? Do we?
I mean, the first thing is to try to identify what's out of kilter, so.
Would it be, I wonder if there's any money available or any grant money available for, to hire, you know, a consultant or something like that to run through the zoning bylaws and see if they can identify some stuff.
Well, that'd be a good question. I can ask that at the, at the quarterly meeting and just say, you know, we're so unconscious of a lot of this stuff. How, how could we, who, who is there that could give us examples of what we might need to correct? And, and who is there that's up to speed and, you know, able to come and evaluate your zoning bylaw to see if you've got those institutional bias problems? So, yeah. I'll ask that.
Or best practices or something that we can point to.
Great. You want a motion?
Sure.
I'm not sure.
Alexa wants to know, she says she's sorry. She's not sure. So I said something that stirred her up. Quiet. Alexa, tell a joke.
He was telling us how far in advance Mark has to submit his preliminary plans.
Oh, yeah, that'd be, the day will come when we can do that, but I don't think we're there yet.
I just, I can't find anything about it.
It's going to be something else, isn't it? Wow. We could only live long enough, huh?
You gotta, you gotta play a video game that's out now called Red Dead.
Red Debt?
Red Dead.
Or Red Dead?
It's the Wild West, like just after the Civil War.
Yeah.
And there's horses and, you know, all the stuff that goes on in the Wild West, right? And you're a character in it. And not only are the humans just remarkably realistic in the way they look and move and everything, you can dress them and all that. But the horses are so good. If you didn't look carefully, you would think they were real. You know.
Smell-o-vision? I said, is it smell-o-vision?
Smell-o-vision, that's what you need. You need some odor.
Hey, what was the name of that show you told me about yesterday on Netflix or whatever?
The Righteous Gemstones.
Okay.
You gotta watch at least one episode.
What's it on Amazon? Is that what you said?
You know, I'm not sure. I think it is, but I'm not sure. If you, you know, type it into the Google, it'll tell you. I was helping Tim shovel the snow out of his pickup truck yesterday.
He was a coach. I needed a coach.
Yeah, I was cheerleader, yeah.
Yeah.
You had your excavator. Breaking it out the back.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion, any further discussion?
Do we get paid the full amount if we do less than the normal three hours? Okay.
Yep, full pay. Just make sure you declare it in your taxes. Okay, I will take a, a voice vote here. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Janet Campbell.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye.